Good evening, we'll call our city regular city council meeting to order. We note that we have six of our seven council members in attendance. Councilman Lang, apparently has gone, we'll just say she's not able to speak. And, that's better, okay. I wasn't speaking into the microphone correctly enough. So again, we apologize for starting just a couple of minutes late. We have a study meeting just before this and there were some items that occupied us, that were critical, that will be on our agenda next week. So for those of you who are interested, you're all welcome back. And so, we'll begin our meeting with an opening ceremony. This opening ceremony is being done by Councilman Rushton.
Thank you Mayor, and those on the council and those of you that have been to other summer meetings know that I usually like to do my, take my turn during opening ceremony in the summer to highlight some type of patriotic sporting event. And usually those come in the form of baseball games. And I think that I've ran the gambit of a number of memorable baseball games that have had a vast impact on our country and patriotism and led us into a pledge of allegiance. When I start thinking of maybe another sporting event, I came down to two, two probably the greatest sporting events that had a relationship with patriotism. And the first one being the 1980 Miracle on Ice. And the second one being, which we all know a lot about, especially with the last Olympics. Probably the other one that's tied with that is 1936 Olympics. So I've asked Jake to queue up this short video and then that will lead us into our pledge of allegiance.
It is not only a tally of medals which turns a champion into a hero. If there's one man who will exemplify the ultimate Olympic hero, it is America's Jesse Owens. His achievements, which would sit in the record books, are as remarkable for the dignity and grace in which they were performed, as for the barriers they broke. Archie Williams was Owens' teammate in 1936 and the winner of the 400 meters.
I guess I would call him Superman, on the team, everybody knows that. But I mean, I felt, I felt that he was one of the, one of the names.
Surrounded by fancy propaganda and its doctrine of alien superiority, Owens became the dominant figure of the 1936 Games in Berlin. He was cheered every time he entered the stadium, cheering like a star. He was, after all, the fastest man in the world, black or white. 1120 meters relatively easy for his teammate Ralph Mender. The 200 meters saw a bigger margin of victory, breaking the Olympic record by almost half a cent. He completed the sprint treble by helping the American 4x100 meter relay team to a 12-yard victory with a world record that could stand for 20 years. His fourth gold medal proved to be more of a battle.
He was so good, he never practiced a long jump. I don't think he practiced enough, because some of the times he would be, he would foul out, or he was misqualifying, because he didn't have a step down.
Owens almost bent to qualify for the long jump, until his main rival, the German Lutz Long, suggested that he remove his mark back and make sure of a safe, legal jump. Once in the final, Owens and Long battled it out in front of a strongly partisan crowd. When Long actually equalled Owens' jump, the German crowd erupted in excitement. Owens responded with an even longer leap, then sealed his victory with a new Olympic record with his final jump. In front of Hitler, the 100,000 crowd, Lutz Long was the first person to congratulate Owens, cementing a friendship that was to last until Long was killed at the Battle of San Pedro in 1943. Recalling his feelings at the time, Owens later said, "You can melt down all the medals and cups I had, and they wouldn't be of plating for the 24-carat friendship I felt for Lutz Long." Neat.
It's a good story, and I know those of you that have come to be honored tonight, I hope that you'll take that little piece of it with you throughout your endeavors, throughout your life. And please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I tried to look around, generally we have a scout troop here, working on a merit badge, but I've looked around and not any of you look like scouts, in uniform, so. We'll go right to the next part, which are our minutes. We have the minutes of our special regular meeting on May 1st and our regular meeting May 6th. To the council.
Mayor? Vote for approval of the minutes of May 1st, 2014 special regular meeting, and May 6th, 2014 regular meeting.
And motion is properly before us, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Nordfeldt. Motion is properly before us, any discussion? Seeing none, let's place it for a vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes, unanimous. Next, we come to that point on our program which all of you are here for, our awards, ceremonies, and proclamations. And what we will be doing is, I have the privilege of reading the names, and we will have different council members present those certificates for those who are here. When we read your name, we would invite you to come forward. This was a tradition that was started, I believe, a few years ago, and we want to recognize the top 3% of West Valley City students in different high schools. I believe we have them from Cypress, Granger, Hunter, and Taylorsville. And so, we're not going to group them that way, we'll just go through these, and as your name is read, invite you to come forward and receive that certificate of recognition. We appreciate those students in our city who have taken the effort to maintain their grades, to make the effort to become skilled in the studies that they have taken upon themselves in their high school. And that will well prepare them as future citizens, not only for our city, but for cities around the state and some around the nation, perhaps even a few around the world. They will have their own individual impact, and we think it very appropriate to recognize them. Those of you who have come with them, family members and friends, thank you for supporting them and their efforts as well. So, with that then, as I read your name, please come forward. Steve Vincent will be handing out these certificates to those students who are here. We'll begin with Adam King from Cypress High School. Next, we'll have Aubrey L. Coe. What we will do, because there's so many of these time-wise, we'll have you hold your applause to the end, and we'll do them all together, and get a real round of applause for them, so. Next, I believe it's Callie Curtis, she's not here. Kirsten Harper, from Cypress, not here. Thomas Hickman from Cypress, there's Thomas. Sabrina Selman, from Cypress, not here. Mackenzie Elliott, there's Mackenzie. Kirsten Peterson, her coming from the back, from Cypress. Kenneth Barnett, from Cypress, not here. Andrea Gutierrez, there she comes. And then we'll go now to Councilman Lars Nordfeldt, who will hand out the next group of certificates. We have Katie Starks from Cypress. Tiffany Bentley, from Granger. Mahalia G. Los, did I get that right, Mahalia? No. What is it? Mahela? Okay, Mahela G. Los. I guess I got the last name wrong. From Granger. Angela R. Hanks, from Granger. Courtney E. Paviyo or Corillo? Is it Corillo? Okay. Sorry, I spent a lot of time working in South America, so double L's are wise. Sabrina E. Little? Jimmy N. Bowe? Lilian A. Fornier? These are all from Granger. Trevor J. Cobb? Oh, let's see, yeah, now we're going to switch over to Councilman Tom Kuhn for the next presentation, Trevor J. Cobb, who is not here. Anna Di Soto? Gage T. Winters? Matthew Brown from Granger. Carlos, or Carmo S. Cardoso Jimenez. Hope I got that close. Now, here's one that will be a challenge for me. Vera Eira Esquard? Okay, I'm not good on those. How close is it? Era? Era Esquard? Alyssa, Alyssa Maddox? There's an N in there, that's not right. Alyssa? Anisa? Ah, I'm sorry. Anisa Maddox, from Granger. Sierra S. Everill, from Granger? And I hope Sierra was close? It is, okay. Cassidy K. Hunter, from Granger. Tiffany Rodrick, from Granger. Okay, thank you. Now we'll go to Councilman Cory Rushton. We'll begin with Jordan M. Miles from Hunter. Clayton P. Allred, from Hunter. James I. Azavevo, from Hunter. David C. Kuhn? Okay. Cody T. Powell, from Hunter. Brody J. Westburg, from Hunter.
I'll hold the joke on.
Mandatory concert, now that's why we're missing some of these. Then Carlos A. Munoz. Jason D. Meyer. Abigail J. Peterson, excuse me, Abigail L. Peterson. And Elizabeth A. Blackburn, from Hunter. So, thank you, now we'll go to, oh, let's see. Councilman Vincent again, will do the next batch. Suzanne L. Harris, from Hunter. Alyssa M. Ariano? And again, I used the Spanish pronunciation there, Ariano is okay? From Hunter. Brittany D. Pham, from Hunter. She is over here. Emily R. Redd, from Hunter. Nathan R. Miller, from Hunter. And Nohea K. Pauni? And I hope I got that relatively close. I'm not sure that even with coaching I could do better. Jessica Ketchum, from Hunter. Kathy M. Chow, from Hunter. And Chow was right? Okay. Chloe E. Robler? Roblier? Oh, I'm not getting that right. I can tell by the smile on her face. If you would just help me with that last name? Roblier? Robler. Oh, I'm putting too much effort, so. Thank you, from Hunter. And Caleb L. Curtis, from Hunter. Here, next we'll go to Councilman Steve Bueller. Jessica L. Donio, from Hunter. Emma M. Anderson, from Hunter. Dominique J. Lane, from Hunter. Nicole E. Miller, from Taylorsville. Valerie J. Stope, from Taylorsville. Dennis Bach, from Taylorsville. Oh boy. Ai T. Ta, from Taylorsville. Looks like Taylorsville probably had a conflict tonight. Kylie T. Healy, from Taylorsville. Ah, Kylie? I got that right? Very good. Christopher R. Lyons, from Taylorsville. And Maria C. Torres, from Taylorsville. Now, I believe that that is all of the students that we had. If there was anyone we missed, boy, now's the time to speak up. Okay, one of the requests we've had is that the students from each high school come forward, we're going to take a group photo here.
Let's do alphabetical.
Well, we'll do Cypress. So all of her from Cypress High School, if you'd come forward, those students.
Cypress, show me your certificates, please.
I've got one more. I'll take a couple and I'll get out of your way.
And you're welcome to, if you want to come closer, you can do that as well. Now, this is good practice. And everyone have their pictures if they want? Okay, thank you, students. Next will be our students from Granger High School. You all have your certificates, I guess?
Hey, wouldn't you have me? Can we switch you from her page? There we go. There we go. Okay.
Now, for those of you who would like to come out in the center and take pictures, you're welcome to do so, or stand up.
When we're done with each school, I would like all of you in the lobby for a picture for Facebook in the morning.
Next, we have the students from Hunter, if they would come forward with their certificates.
You guys do this class like that?
Don't worry, we'll wait till you all get your chance to take your pictures.
Before we go out to do the group shot, we'll let the council comment, and then we'll go out in the lobby.
Okay, we have some council members who would like to make a few comments. We'll start with Councilman Rushton, our mayor pro tem, for some comments.
Thank you Mayor, I know that a lot of you want to get out and celebrate, so I'll be real quick. I think in the seven years that we've done this, undoubtedly, this, you know, the classes keep getting smarter, but they also get better looking. But I appreciate how, you know, everybody came in their ties, in their shirts, in their dresses, or sporting their favorite bands t-shirts, so I think everyone was well represented by that tonight. But now that you know where the, you've been to a city council meeting, that we hope that you'll come back and see us from time to time, when there's items of importance that come up in your neighborhood, because we always are in need of input from well-versed, well-read, well-educated members of our, our community, and so, I'd just like to say congratulations, and come back and see us often.
Councilman Vincent?
I'd just like to give a big thank you to the parents. As a parent myself, I know what it's like to, to struggle to make sure your kids are on task and doing the things that they should do, and so, I think we ought to give the parents a round of applause. And one other item, I think by the struggles the mayor had in pronouncing names, I think we always talk about our community being a diverse community, and I think this goes to show that we do have a very diverse community, and that diversity is a good thing. And we have well-educated people who come from diverse backgrounds, and makes our city strong and vibrant, and I thank you for that.
Okay, Councilman Bueller?
Just wanted to also notice, this is a payday for your parents. Do lots of good things in your life that your parents will be proud of. And it's nice to see children in West Valley achieve, and we expect a lot of you, we expect you to make the city a better place. Hope that you will stay here, invest here, and live here, and help this community out. Was Pink Floyd who sang, "We don't need no education." And you smart kids, you know that double negative means we do need an education. So congratulations, you're only juniors now, go out and do a great job in your senior years, and in higher education. And thanks for being here.
Well, thank you to all of you. I know that for picture-taking purposes, they want you all to come out in the foyer, where you can get a little bigger... where you can get a little bigger view and get you all together. Thank you to all who came to support these students. We appreciate each one of them, members of our community. And we are grateful for what they add to our community, each one of you in your own individual way, and what you add to your high schools. And keep up the good work. And again, one last round of applause for everyone and you may... Thank you very much.